Capital Improvement Program Budget, if that's all right, we'll go through that. And then we'll go through the operating budget. And then we will hopefully take a vote on what we'll be recommending to the Board of Finance for their meeting on March 7, 2012, to make a recommendation to the public hearing which will be held in April. So with that, Tony, do you want to give us an overview first?
Sure. Yeah, I'll give you an overview. The documents you have in front of you have a amount to be raised by taxes of $40 million, eight, eight, nine, five, seventy-four, which translates to a mil rate of thirty-four point oh one, or a two point eight one percent increase over the prior year. A couple of highlights for you. That includes the most recent Amity Regional School District figure, which we had gotten from the last Board of Finance meeting from Matt. And that's actually a two point six nine percent reduction over the prior year. So that's the most recent figure there, just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Does that might, would that might change, or is...
If it changes, it would be reduced further, but at least that's what I'm told. Obviously, it could change in any direction.
Right, okay.
Matt feels pretty comfortable. That, that'll be the highest it'll be.
That's good.
So with that, I wanted to just go to the capital budget section. And capital budget has total of one point four five six five one six. That's the total appropriation from the capital budget, which if you look on this mil rate sheet, it's the last figure on the list of departments. And we start with the Board of Education. And I'm just going to go through and highlight the ones that we made adjustments to, and then we'll do the discussion. The first was the Board of Education to grounds and landscaping and just general north and south walkways, entries, parking lots. There's a request of three hundred and eighty, one thousand air lots for that year. And my thought there was to apply for a STEAP grant to try to get that accomplished. And we've had success with the STEAP grant feature in the past. We've got two so far, one for the north, the south, and one for the north. I spoke with Dr. Stell on this also, and he thought that was a fine idea. And so that was our plan for that.
So we can implement like that plan that was presented to us?
At least a portion of it, depending on how much STEAP funding you get. STEAP funding is actually up to five hundred thousand dollars. So we will apply for the maximum and hope for the best. We were just recently successful with that on the police station. And so that was our thought there.
And Tony, would you remind me, there's a study, right? After that did the south driveway and...
Yes. There's currently a design to redesign the north driveway.
And that, the funding for that design work is...
Also a STEAP grant.
But that's been awarded, that's...
Correct. That was a prior STEAP grant from a few years ago.
And that's how, that's already happened?
Yes, yes. So they're hopeful to do that work this summer, in August, the week, I guess, the weekend, two weeks in August when the schools...
Last two weeks.
Yeah. So that was our adjustments in that department.
This might, I'm sorry...
I don't know if you want to go depart, you know, do department by department, or you want to go, give any other...
Are there any questions on the Board of Education? We can take those up now. You can see from the major infrastructure upgrade and building renovations, that is all going to be included, I think, in the recommendation to the Board of Education from the Building Committee, which Greg is a member in the upcoming months, so...
We're planning on finishing our recommendations on March 2nd. So it's just, we've been working really hard, but that's the goal, is by March 2nd, to have a final recommendation. Our goal is to do the work essentially that was, you know, outlined in the previous committee, but to try and do it in this phased approach. And what that's probably going to mean is, you know, the north first roof envelope. And we have to sort of address H-back at the same time.
Is there a time on the phased approach, or is it, is that not determined yet in terms of how long, or...
It's not really determined yet, but I think the goal would be to, you know, year one, be able to do that phase, have a year two, have a year three. And so we just are trying to get this so it's manageable number that, and so that we can achieve this without wasting money and, just because it's more challenging when you do it phased.
Right.
Doing things phased, we've sort of figured out, is, the H-back is a huge cost. You have to decide on, you have to decide on your mechanicals in advance so that we can build out as we go. So that's really what's been taking most of the effort. But we do hope to be done on March 2nd. And we had to put off that tri-board meeting just because there was more work to be done.
These are all pre-reimbursed numbers, right? Pre-state reimbursement number, huh?
Correct. So how does that work for tonight and what we proposed to Board of Finance? Because right now we're looking at seventeen four seventy-two. We haven't met with, than the tri-board meeting yet, so does that, we just push this forward to Finance? I mean, they're, they're going to meet before Finance meets, right? So with this number, is this number going to change significantly? Do we know? Is it going to...
Well, surely it won't be seventeen million or whatever. It'll probably be in the area...
So how do we, so we're not going to recommend this number?
No.
How do we work that with Finance?
Well, we'll wait the meeting with the joint meeting, and then we will take a vote to make a recommendation at that time to the Board of Finance.
So theoretically, we'll have the joint meeting before Finance meets?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and then the Board of Finance most likely will take up final recommendations after their March meeting. Typically, that's what they do every year. They'll meet on the 7th. But really, we need the book by when? The 20th or so? It's right around there.
The hearing is the April 23rd, so we...
We back up from the hearings when we need the final recommendation, so... Their 15th is their March meeting, that's probably when they'll make their final recommendations for the document that we then would publish for the meeting in Mar, in April.
Does this have to go up to a vote eventually, or...
It will eventually, yeah.
It will, okay.
Either at the annual town meeting, or...
Right, okay.
Yeah, special...
Yeah, exactly, right, okay.
This is just for planning purposes.
Right.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thanks, Greg.
Okay. So Board, go ahead.
Okay, Board of Selectmen, we didn't make any adjustments, nor did we to the Building Department. It's just all good work for a while.
He's been waiting a long time.
He has, that's been under about four years, five years.
It's falling apart. I agree.
In the building maintenance area, there's actually an add, and that's Darling House improvements. And we're working closely with the caretakers, the Historical Society, to come up with a capital plan for the Darling House. It includes a lot of repairs to the various systems in the house. And this is just a portion of that, but things that were immediate in nature. And so that's what that is for. And you, we had some repairs funded earlier in the year, if you remember, mostly some painting and electrical. This continues on that. It also has some longer range, there's some issues with the house in terms of the roof and the, so there, damage done upstairs, some of the rooms upstairs. And it is an asset of the town that you have to consider when making your capital budget.
You know, we've been trying to have a tour of the Darling House, but members of the Board of Selectmen, anybody will work that out. So we should do that going forward. I don't know how many of you have been in there and taken a look at it, and, you know, it's a treasure of...
It is town. It is a really nice...
I think when I first moved here, twenty-five years ago...
They do a dinner. Remember we went, they do a dinner twice a year, spring and fall harvest. And last year it was nice, but it is in disrepair.
It is.
There are a lot of places that need help.
So we should arrange for that, Jerry, sometime in the spring, or definitely, yeah.
The Fire Commission change was the radio system, just, and the first, first on the radio system is it matches the funding with the police, which is their portion of it, which is out a year, 2014. So that was one reason for that. And also to give more time to come up with, you know, to understand better the process of upgrading the radio system. I know the last time this was done was right before I came...
Nine years ago.
Right. Just as I was coming in, there was a committee that was formed to look into this process. And not only assess the needs at that time, but what's best to move forward with.
Right.
And there is a committee now, more or less, working together with the police and fire, aren't they looking at this chief role in the race store, I think?
Right, yeah.
The system has served us very well for the last decade or so. You've got us...
Exactly, simulcast.
Yeah, simulcast. Last time we did it, we borrowed them, like, yeah.
Can't believe it's been nine years already.
Yes, because I was in Chicago, we were all to pick up and go through the train.
Yeah. And we issued ten-year, ten-year bonds on those, on that radio, like, ten years. It actually worked out well.
Yeah.
Okay. The next item I'd like to discuss is in parks. There's no change in either human services or the library. In parks, here's the number six, organic pesticide equipment. And I want to bring, just to discuss, last year in the budget, if we recall, we had in our budget thirty thousand dollars for the relocation of the track, just a portion of the track, the Fitzgerald track, that goes through the parking lot. If we remember, we had this discussion last year, the recommission brought it up, put it in the budget. Well, we haven't done that, and for a number of reasons. One, it involved where you would relocate the track, there were some wetlands, it was wet in this, in the wet, you know, it would have required some wetland issues and maybe building some structure. It was very complicated, became very complicated very quickly. So that, those funds have not been used. So one thing I was thinking is possibly that's an opportunity to use it for this issue, if you think that's a good idea. And then you don't have to put it in the budget.
Is it comparable?
Yeah, it's actually pretty comparable, because the difference in twenty-two plus about seven is the difference in the chemicals. And it would be, it would pretty much cover the equipment and the chemicals.
We'd have to figure out some other method of dealing with the labor issue with the road.
Well, what he did was, I, his plan, I don't know if he's actually done it yet, but the plan was to put additional signage up.
Right.
Are you talking about at the Fitzgerald property, that you have people running where the cars are coming?
Correct, that's it.
Well, you have, there's a part where you've got the initial parking lot...
Yeah.
And then the road narrows when the car's driving to get up to the community garden.
That's exactly it, yes.
Plus, they also have cross-country runs up there, the teams, that's where they run their meats. So I would, I would have even thought just like, landscape timbers along the edge of the...
That's the sort of...
And then they just kind of separate it out, and that's not going to cost thirty thousand dollars.
Yeah, that's exactly what we were thinking, yeah.
It doesn't have to be complicated, I think.
Right. Well, the original plan, which was thirty thousand dollars, was a complicated plan, which did prove not to be...
Well, then your suggestion sounds like a very, a very good one.
Yeah. So we use that money that was allocated for that new walkway to apply to the pesticides.
Yeah, it's a great idea.
I would, I would use the, I would do a transfer of funds at the next meeting.
Yeah, I mean, that takes care of my concerns about the expense.
Right. And this was, and this was his figure, right? You were...
It was, yeah.
The twenty-two eight...
Twenty-two eight for the...
So it's revenue neutral.
The...
That's for the equipment, right?
The equipment.
Yeah.
And then this stuff, the twenty-five five and the seventy-five hundred is what you're talking about, which we would...
Well, what would happen is the, it's the seventy-five hundred.
I'm okay.
It's the additional money here for the equipment, for this, minus the labor issue.
Okay.
Which...
Is fourteen thousand.
Is the labor issue.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's in the...
Operating.
Operating thing, part.
Right.
But I would, I would just comment on the organic pesticide application. When the Recreation Commission made its unanimous recommendation to move in this direction, I think there was an understanding among, among each, you know, by each commissioner, that there would be these upfront costs for the equipment, for some additional labor. But this, this might be my best opportunity to reiterate that the commissioners were eager for this to be a phased-in move toward synthetic chemical-free field maintenance.
Right, being on a few fields for two years.
Two complexes.
Right.
Yeah, half the complexes.
Not all of the fields in town, correct.
And so anyway, I just wanted to remind us of that, and to underscore that, a story in today's Connecticut Post about legislation currently before the General Assembly, several municipalities have, have convinced lawmakers to introduce a bill that would roll back the outright ban on synthetic chemical use at primary schools, because fields in some towns are, well, let me quote, "They claim their athletic fields are now crabgrass-strewn lots." And then there are quotes here from the director of Parks and Recreation in Glastonbury, someone else, from South Windsor's town manager. So I only brought this as, to serve as a cautionary tale. If Woodbridge is to move in this direction, I think it's a great idea, and it's, I think there's consensus that we would like to, but even though we'll have the equipment, we'll have a budget for more manpower, maybe we ought to take baby steps.
I think that was one of the concerns with REC, was that some of the fields may become dangerous from a perspective of, if they're not well turfed, they're harder, and it's more of an issue of the kids getting hurt. I don't think they're going to roll back, I find, I don't think it's going to happen to have them roll back at the high schools, but that...
I'm sorry, roll back...
Not, not that I would advocate for that.
Roll back what? I didn't hear what you said.
You had said that they were...
There's a bill.
Right.
And I'm not sure that it will, that it will go anywhere.
I don't see it going anywhere, but I'm sure they'd oppose anything that would push it to either statewide or at the high schools. I think right now it's only up to the eighth grade, right?
I thought that Adam was pretty secure in the fact that he, if he overseeded and overseeded it, he felt comfortable that he could manage these fields.
That's right, he did say that.
Yeah.
Right, but he also said that he tried to do something like that a few years ago, and he lost a field. And it took a while to get that field back. And that's a concern that REC has, is that if they lose a field, they'll have to rent something somewhere else, and they're not prepared to make that, put that in their budget.
And I, you know, I'm, I'm not a turf expert, I'm just relating the concerns of the Recreation Commission, largely because there aren't additional fields to move on to.
Correct.
But isn't it the case that whether we take baby steps or do it all at one time, we still need the equipment?
Oh, yeah, we have...
Yeah, absolutely, no, there's no argument.
That's what this is for, right?
Right, there's no argument that we're going to do this.
Yep, yep.
And I think it just makes it easier that we're not going to do the pathway...
Right.
REC, and we'll just use those funds for the...
And that funds are used for this. So for us, it's a revenue neutral type of...
And there are enough reasonable minds in this town to figure out the right way to sort of...
Right.
Need all those varying interests, and then we're doing it.
Right, yeah. The, hey, Tony, the number stuff we're presenting on that, were the labor and the material?
Yeah.
That was town-wide, right?
Correct.
We put that before.
Yes, yes.
So if we were to back that off to Center in West River, the equipment's the equipment.
Correct.
But...
Center, we're not using any pesticides, right?
Well, West River.
I mean, West River.
He only uses the herbicide there, not the pesticides.
I thought at the end of the meeting, we were talking about doing Center and Acorn Hill.
Yeah.
No, I think it was, yeah, not Acorn Hill. I thought, I think it was West River.
No, it was not, it was not Acorn.
Acorn Hill was Yankee State.
Acorn Hill, they don't want to mess with...
We had this conference, well, we can bring Adam back.
For the purposes of tonight, this will just resolve the issue, put it in the budget.
Right.
You could also always revisit it, because we have to want to check for the money anyway.
No, but that, that's a separate issue. We're buying the equipment. The question is, what fields are we going to do?
Right.
Yeah, and that, that's, that could be for a later time.
Later time, yeah.
We can bring him back on that.
Yeah, maybe we'll do the transfer in March, we do it March, whatever, six or something.
Yeah, yeah, we have heard March, yeah.
And he can come back and go over it with us.
Okay.
Don't have to make a decision.
Is that today's Connecticut Post report?
Yes. The next adjustment is in Pool and Gym. We removed the three hundred thousand dollars for the pool equipment replacement in a condition report, and I know that's something that the Building Committee is part of their charge, correct? So that's why we moved that. I think that is it.
Can I ask a quick question, getting back to the Recreation Commission?
Uh-huh.
The two hundred fifty thousand dollar figure that is still listed on 2017 for a ninety-foot baseball diamond.
So we took that out of there, don't we?
No, we never did.
We're gonna, yeah.
Yeah.
And I think just to, just so everybody's on the same blank page.
That, of course, is from 2017.
No, I know, but I... Teach me to read all the way across the...
I don't know the background.
What?
I don't even know the background on that.
It was before our time.
This has been going on for years, about a ninety-foot diamond, and so it's always put in the budget, but never, you know, authorized.
There was a referendum back, and, long time ago, there was a refer, a town referendum. The town voted to ex, to spend two hundred fifty thousand dollars on it, on a ninety-foot diamond. It was never bonded, still out there, still...
I think at the time, there was no site.
Right, they didn't have a site, but there was...
Sort of a concept.
But the town voted, the town voted in a referendum to bond for two hundred fifty thousand dollars for a ninety-foot diamond, and it never got bonded, so it's still, it's still out there, because we've never really...
So since then, we've made this arrangement with the Father's Baseball League to use the Alleghy property, provided they raise the money to build the ball field. And it's over a five-year period, I guess, and so we'll be looking for a report from them come July or so, how they've been doing with fundraising.
I have a question, thank you, stupid question, I apologize. But should I be mentally thinking that this three hundred thousand dollar figure under Pool and Gym now belongs under this Board of Ed fund?
Well, it's part of that project, so yeah.
Part of the charge.
Incorporate it into that charge.
Okay.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so any questions or comments on those?
Just the ten thousand dollars for the government access television is taken, that's disappeared from the operating budget, and then it's here?
No, the, the one from the operating budget is part of the grant, correct, Pool?
Yes.
The one in the capital budget?
Oh, they asked, okay.
Is that, is that the grant also?
Yes.
Yeah. So we can take that up too.
Well, it's already, it's already out from the...
Right. But it's still, it was still in the capital budget here.
Okay, so it disappears from both?
So that's my understanding, is it's, they're both, they're both going to be funded through the grant?
It's one item. I probably put it in two places, because I didn't know.
Oh, okay. Okay, that's probably what it is.
Just to make sure.
It's the capital list.
Right. So that reduces the...
So that reduces it by those two items, I remove the pesticide equipment, and the ten thousand in WG TV.
So that gives us a capital budget to be recommended to the Board of Finance?
One million four two three seven one six.
So I entertain a motion to approve the recommendation from the Board of Selectmen to the Board of Finance for the capital budget for fiscal years 2013, in the amount of one million four hundred twenty-three thousand seven hundred sixteen dollars.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Of both? Has to be unanimous, okay. So then that gets us to the operating question. Begin with the Board of Selectmen.
The, mainly on the Board of Selectmen, there were a lot of minor changes, four, one, two, three, four in particular, just mostly reflecting what we felt the actual should be, or more accurately, closely accurately reflected at. With the exception of meeting supplies, which was reduced by about half. And there was no real substantive changes here, other than some minor changes to reflect what we felt actual expenses would probably most likely be.
Next is the probate court.
Do you know what's needed to the probate court?
We pay a fee to the probate court in Ansonia, it's part of that district now, and Ansonia likewise pays a fee, or gives in kind service if they have a facility. Seymour and Derby as well.
Court pays, the court actually pays a, which is the biggest part of their budget, a rent to the city that's over.
And our share of that budget is determined by the grant list?
Yeah, yeah, it's about twenty-five percent, I think.
Next is the town clerk.
Town clerk, again, we made some minor adjustments to a few lines, based on where we thought the actuals would be, and where actuals were in the prior year. It's a few hundred dollars here and there.
Buyback, sick days, telephone...
Right, security, that sort of thing.
Can I ask a question about the legal ads?
Sure.
The elections are every other year, certainly town elections. So 2011, the actuals were twenty, two thousand six seventy-five.
Two six seventy-five, right.
Yeah, and then this year, not, not many elections, so her actual was twenty-two hundred.
Okay.
My concern is the twenty-eight hundred that she asked for would probably reflect more accurately, because it's, it's going to be an election year. And also, there's a presidential preference, well, actually, the presidential preference primary comes up before July, but there will be a big election in November, so I'm just worried about legal ads. If she needs more, I guess she could get it, but I think that was the, the explanation in the asking, twenty-eight hundred, so if you want, it's okay, I have no issue, I just want to bring that to your attention.
Two six seven five?
Is what it was in ten eleven...
She's done with that, you want to reset the twenty-eights, that you're suggesting.
What she asked for, but it, if she doesn't need it, it'll come back. I don't know.
Well, we'll pay for all the ads, we're just, question on... Well, we'll pay for all the ads, we're just, question on how much money do we need to raise by taxes?
Okay, I got that part.
Yeah.
So, we can leave it the way it is, and then if she needs more, it's, okay, either way, I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, registrar of board?
There are no changes.
Again, a lot of elections, so.
Right.
Two districts now, so.
Yeah, two districts and the state senate?
Someone knows there.
Yes.
Some of us are in Milford, some of us are in Woodbridge.
Are you actually going to have to vote in, where's the voting site?
It'll be in the same place, but it may be a separate area for that vote, in the center vote.
Right.
Add the gym into four parts instead of two.
Right. Got to buy more machines and, oh, boy.
More people, more people have to work.
Government access television?
We moved the ten thousand, as we discussed earlier, for the grant. General administration, there's a minor reduction in rentals of equipment. Two sixty-eight sixteen.
Tony, is that a final figure on the liability insurance?
No, it is not. That's a good question, and we're currently diligently working on that. And so, a lot of times with liability insurance and with some of the benefits, typically don't have that information till probably the earliest the Board of Finance meeting, sometimes not until after the hearing. So, as soon as we have that most updated information, we will reflect that in the budget.
And we can always amend these, you know.
Yeah, these are always amended up until the town meeting, actually, yeah.
Okay. Information systems?
Systems, we did a few minor adjustments. We reduced the computer line and the software upgrades by a few hundred dollars here and there.
Next is the finance department.
I think we got one here too, if I'm not mistaken, buyback sick was reduced a little to reflect actual. And dues by five dollars.
Sharp pencils here, right.
He's paying for the cookies, right?
Right, that's right.
Gotta get the cookies somehow.
What was it?
Okay. Next is the tax department.
And I believe on this one, we reduced the printing and binding by a few hundred dollars.
Buyback sick.
Yeah, buyback sick, and dues.
These are all small reductions.
Small, right, yeah, yeah. Next is the tax assessor.
Uh, there are no changes here.
Board of tax review. With the spare.
Board of finance. Uh, no changes.
I, uh, I made a note to ask about the thought process behind the contingency line, given in particular the Country Club of Woodbridge.
Good question. Um, the thought process behind the contingency was, in fact, that that's a historical number that is used for contingency over the past, aside from last year, of when we had some contractual issues. That was historically been a figure that's been used for contingency. And it's, um, I can't recall if there was ever a time we had to replenish it. So, um, but it might have, yeah, Country Club, it's your decision if you want to increase that or not.
Well, I, we maybe want to do that, I think we want, the process with the Country Club of Woodbridge, we're awaiting the final budget recommendation from the Casper Group that's going to be managing it. Then the Country Club of Woodbridge Commission is going to take a look at that budget to see if they agree with that or not, and I think they may, probably may make some changes in that, be more conservative. And so, then we'll be able to see.
That'll, that's when it'll really tell you if there's going to be a contingency.
Well, and, right, we haven't gotten to that page yet, but that page was all zeros and.
Right, that's the reason why it is, because we don't have that.
Yeah.
Right, and, and if, if it's the commissioners, or if it's Casper, or some combination, they'll make a presentation the way other departments do, I guess.
Sure, yeah.
There will be a, there will be a, uh, a capital request line out of in that department.
There will be, correct. That'll be both.
Okay.
But that, that, we should get that in the next thirty days.
No, I, yeah, under normal, under normal, um, going forward, they'll be in the queue with all the other departments.
The ordinary budget process, but.
This year, because of the unusual circumstances, it's, the time rate is not optimal.
So, we should have that in March.
Okay, so, continue.
Right. Uh, next is planning and zoning, we made one, a minor change to buyback sick, and I think that's it.
Next, zoning board of appeals.
Uh, no changes there.
The center.
Uh, there's no changes there either. The other big piece of this budget that was, we're still fine tuning is the oil heating line. And, um, that's a sort of a product of how the gas project winds its way through, so. Right now, we have the funding for oil heating.
Former fire station? Again, that's oil heating as well, that's the final.
Right, right, so oil heating figures are not final.
And they're not final, not only because of the gas, but also.
Because of bid.
Because of the bid process.
Right, which was delayed because of the, that process, we discussed that at the last meeting. Hopefully, that'll take place shortly.
Right.
So, by the next meeting, we'll have that information, and for the Board of Finance.
On the, on the consortium?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, and then the Country Club of Woodbridge, you see there's all zeros there, but that'll, we say will be changed. Police department?
Okay, in the police department, we had a series of changes to go down towards the bottom. There's a whole series of changes. They're minor in nature, but there's regional services and maintenance of vehicles, rentals of equipment. Be sure to sharpen our pencil and see where we can make some reductions. Same on the second, the next page, Carlo, it's dues.
Office.
Office, right. Still no major changes.
Any questions on the police? Next is the fire commission.
It's a significant reduction in the repair and maintenance building line, fifty-three five thirty?
Correct.
And is that because some of that's going to be done this year, or is it?
Well, they had, um, well, as you know, it's a new building, and we're hopeful that, um, you know, some of those expenses we had this year were related to the, um, we have reimbursed for, uh, for the hurricane, some of the building expenses, hopefully, we're just trying to feel our way through that, that we won't have to spend as much. We may, but that's our, that's our hope.
The other changes were rentals of equipment and computer.
That's right.
Minor change.
Minor changes, right.
Next is medical services.
There are no changes.
District animal control?
No changes.
Building department?
No adjustments. Public works. In public works, we made a significant change to the road maintenance line. Road maintenance is used for, not for paving, which is in the capital budget, but for more maintenance activities related to the, um, to roads. And if there's any, uh, you know, issues with, sometimes they're used for crack sealing and for, uh, if there's a pipe problem with a road, a problem with a road, uh, those are sort of the issues that are, are used under road maintenance. And because we had a large increase in rentals of equipment, which was for the tree work, which was put in the budget, we felt that a reduction here was appropriate for this year.
And we're having a mild winter.
So far.
Maybe.
Right, right, so far.
Well, there's got, yeah, I mean, there's got to be some, yeah.
So, we haven't had the chance for any money for supplies and stuff.
We chop off the roads with plows and everything else.
Yeah.
So, that means more cookies.
More road maintenance.
Right, okay.
Waste management? Buyback sick.
I missed your question with the tree work, sorry, just.
Yeah, sure.
Is that related to getting rid of a lot of the things that are near the wires? Are we going to be more aggressive about that?
Correct.
So that going forward, we don't have the same.
If there's an incident going forward.
Yeah.
Hopefully, we're better prepared.
Okay.
Because if there were trees or.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
We've also made arrangements, we have a standby, uh.
Yes, a tree, a tree company standby, right.
So that when we have a, an emergency or a storm like this, these people will be available to go right out, we don't have to go through any projects.
That's great, very good, good idea. After last year, okay. Thank you, sorry.
Okay, waste management, I guess there's a change in buyback sick.
Correct, right.
I guess the only change.
Right, right.
Minor change there. Mediation?
No change here.
This is as a result of, there's a gasoline spill about.
Big day, testing, big day, right.
Big day, yeah.
If we're still testing two wells, maybe?
Two or four, yeah. Two wells on Center Road?
Right, they're on our property.
Those are on our property?
I think so, yeah.
Okay, building maintenance?
Building maintenance, yes, we made some, uh, we reduced maintenance supplies a little. And, um, try to see if they can get by with that. And then general professional services, we reduced a little, and buyback sick. In overtime.
Okay. Human services.
The big change in human services was the reduction of the capital furniture, uh, fixture line. Hopefully, they were able to acquire a stove at no charge, which is what that reduction represents. And that was a major one, there's a few other minor ones, but there's still money in there for the other work to be done for that project.
Recreation.
Part-time seasonal wages were reduced slightly, about ten thousand dollars.
That's it.
That's it?
Yep. Pool and gym?
Just the, uh.
Buyback sick.
Buyback sick. Buyback sick, that was it.
Parks department?
Yeah, Parks Department, there is.
Maintenance place.
Maintenance place has to come down, right. So, that can come off.
So, what number?
The three, it goes back down to seventeen six eighty.
Seventeen six eighty, okay.
And, uh, what else did we do here?
Well, the part-time seasonal line.
We, we didn't, that was a request of his before the pesticide issue came up. And that was just to add one more college person, I believe, for his workload over the summer. I think with that and a few adjustments, he could probably handle, um, the, some of the additional work without adding that extra labor. A lot of it centers around the use of, um, Roundup and weed whacking, that's where a lot of the extra labor comes into play. And one suggestion he made was, one place that particularly, a lot of weed whacking is at the sem, town cemetery, and that was a lot of the labor that was required, that was involved. And will be second areas around the center here. That's where the two, um, labor-intensive areas are, in terms of not using Roundup. So, um, it's something for you to think about, but if, in fact, those two areas were exempt, or somehow he was able to use Roundup on those two areas, then he wouldn't need any extra labor over and above, let's say, his budget.
So, I think he had a number of fourteen thousand dollars, I think, for recommendation there.
That's why we didn't put it in there.
Okay. Yeah, I did have some concerns about weed whacking, your stones.
Particularly the older, the older British stones that are made of sandstone.
Damage, I don't know, but I was thinking about that, yeah.
Yeah.
Not good.
Right. The cemeteries are not like playing fields, and it's, it's, that's right.
As far as we know, the occupants are different groups. I have no guarantees on any of that.
So.
So, when we decide on this pesticide issue, we'll decide on if we phase it.
Right, that's another question, right.
And it plays into the amount of money needed.
Correct.
Because if we simply do two fields and nothing more.
Right.
Then.
Then you know the amount of chemicals and stuff is probably different. And, um, it'd be just, you know, it would impact his budget, certainly. So, once you make that decision, then we can reflect it accordingly.
So, I guess it's to say that we would not include the cemetery or the town properties in the center of the town?
As, as being exempt or non-exempt, say it again, I'm sorry.
Uh, would they, would not be included, the change of pesticide use?
Particularly for, um, Roundup use. Weed whacking, yeah. Well, we can have Adam here to discuss.
Sure, yeah.
Visit it at that time, yeah, visit it.
We can always amend this.
Decision tonight. We could always change the budget, add money to the budget, yeah.
Okay. Thomas Darling Hill?
There are no changes.
Library?
No.
No change?
No changes in the library.
Conservation Commission?
Nope.
No change, no. And on wet ones?
No changes here.
Employee fringe benefits?
Now, employee fringe benefits is another area that we're working hard on to get some final figures, particularly with health insurance and, um, workers' compensation. That, that will definitely not go up, but could hopefully go down. That's the direction, same with the liability insurance. Those will definitely not go up, but it's a possibility that can go down, we're working hard to try to accomplish that. So, um, if that does happen, then we will change those figures somewhere later in the process, whether that be Board of Finance proposed, or somewhere in that neighborhood.
I, um, I would just applaud your commitment to the OPEB contribution. I think, uh, I think that's an important program for the town to pursue and, um.
And fund.
Yes, definitely. I appreciate your support of that.
Definitely.
It's a reality, right now.
Something that's not going to go away, no.
And, and Woodbridge is, is among a, a small group of town.
Definitely, handful, handful, yes.
I think that's to your credit.
Yeah, definitely.
Okay, next is the debt service?
No changes to debt service.
Woodbridge Board of Education?
We did not make any changes to that budget either.
Is there any way to underline that recommendation to the Board of Finance?
They have exclamation point.
Just asking.
Correct. We can do that. Okay, how many regional schools?
And that I mentioned earlier, we made that reduction, and we'll just keep, um, on top of that, kids didn't further changes.
Transfer from general.
That's capital, we discussed that, we made two changes there.
That's it. Okay. So.
Um, just a few quick notes about revenue. Um, just a few quick notes about revenue. That's the next section. We received, we discussed that at the last meeting, the governor's recommended budget is pretty close to where we are here. Other major changes there, let's see if I can. One change I did was removed manufacturers' machinery and equipment. That was removed for seventeen thousand dollars. And there are some minor changes. The P-QOAP fund went up a few thousand. These are all based off the governor's budget excess. Transportation went up a few hundred dollars. No other change here. College and hospital pilot was reduced by a few, few thousand dollars. So there's a general, there's a change of about twenty thousand dollars in, in the governmental revenue. The other change is increased building permits is one thing we increased. That was a budget recommended at seventy-five thousand. And we felt comfortable requesting one hundred and thirty thousand there. That was the current budget for this year. You can see the last year's actual, one hundred and sixty-eight, one hundred and twenty-eight for two thousand and ten. And this year's probably going to be close to that. Hundred and thirty, hundred, probably even more, one hundred and fifty. So we were comfortable with that one.
Right.
And there's one other change here up. Recreation fees. Last, two thousand and eleven, they were a hundred and fifty, almost a hundred and fifty-eight thousand. We increased that to a hundred and fifty thousand. We're hopeful that we'll be able to see some revenue there. Those are the major changes in revenue that I wanted to bring to your attention. If anyone has any other suggestions or comments or questions.
I have a question. I remember when Terry was here and he was talking about revenue from building permits and he said it's mostly all about whole house generators and everything else.
Right.
But I'm trying to understand why if, why he came in so low though, at seventy, why he only thought he'd be bringing in that amount. Was there something other than that?
No, I think he likes the estimate on the conservative side here. And historically, that's been, he likes to only, he only sort of puts in there what he knows or is comfortable that he knows is going to happen. So anything above that, we are taking a educated guess that in fact, we're going to collect that. Historically, we have collected that amount, especially over the past few years. But it's a guess. And, you know, if it, if it happens great, if not, then, you know, you have to deal with that.
Okay. But it's just a style thing, you think, on his part?
Yeah.
Nothing more than that.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Would you just remind us again, Tony, of what the interest income?
Certainly. Our interest income, see, it's fifty thousand dollars. We may even come a little lower, lower than that this year, probably closer to thirty-five or forty. Hopefully, that we see a slight uptick. Back in the mid, I'd say about two thousand and five or so, our budget for that was about seven hundred thousand. Can you believe that?
I thought it was a, ah.
So that's how far it's, it's fallen, which is probably half a mill. And, so. And the, the other side went down a little, but not that drastic. I mean, but, but debt borrowing rates were maybe at that time, four, four and a quarter maybe. And now they're at three. So they haven't come down that far. But we were, it was a big blow.
So do we have a number here for the operating budget to recommend to the Board of Finance?
There are, there were three changes. Reduction of twenty-two thousand hundred dollars for the pesticide, removal of the equipment. Ten thousand dollar reduction for removal of the WGA TV capital budget, the grant. And three thousand dollars in supplies in the Parks Department. Gives you a total expenditure budget of forty-three million, five hundred and four thousand, eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars. That's a, combine that with the non-tax revenue of two point six million dollars, gives you the amount to be collected by taxes of forty million, eight fifty-three, seven seventy-four. And gives, gives you a mill rate of thirty-three point nine eight, which is two point seven three percent. Above last year's.
Two point seven three.
Right.
Okay, so we entertain a motion then to recommend to the Board of Finance an operating budget of forty-three million dol, forty-three million, five hundred and four thousand, eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Always in favor, seeing if I was saying aye. I don't know if it passes unanimously. And then do we need a further motion or is that sufficient for, for what, for what the amount to be?
Did you include that in the motion?
No.
Just up top, if you want? Yeah, you might want it to just be a mill rate.
Yeah, with a mill rate of thirty-three point nine eight.
Okay, good. That's good.
Okay, so you accept that amendment?
Yes.
All those in favor, seeing if I was saying aye.
Right.
And then the Board of Finance will review the budget and make their recommendations.
And, and all of this pending insurance.
Correct.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Insurance refinement and the Country Club of Woodbridge.
This is just as of today, a little change as we go up to the annual.
Heating well.
Heating well.
Yeah.
Okay. So we meet again on March sixth, or, yeah, March sixth. Tuesday, March sixth.
That's a regular meeting.
Regular meeting for March.
Right.
And we'll have Brad here, but, I mean, Adam.
Adam.
Maybe Brad over here. So, okay. All right, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you.